Welcome to the Callexico City Council, Callexico Redevelopment Successor Agency, Callexico Financing Authority Planning Commission meeting. Meeting is now in session. Call to order at 6:40 PM. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Present.
Mayor Protemp Nagaspi.
Present.
Councilmember Ty Linda.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Calderon.
Present.
We have Quan.
Okay, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible and liberating, just as all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts this evening, asking for your guidance, asking for your help, as we set aside any personal interest for the coming good of our community. We are blessed to be part of this awesome community. Please bless our council members, everyone who calls Callexico their home, and may we plant today what will be fruitful for our future generations. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Please, please take a seat. Okay, close session announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session regarding the four agenda's closed session items and took no reportable actions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, approval of the agenda, do you have motion to approve?
I have motion.
Do you have second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Nagaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Ty Linda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So, we're gonna start with our presentations, and we're gonna start with the proclamation for Farm Worker Appreciation Week. Whereas agriculture has traditionally been the backbone of the economy of the Imperial Valley, and whereas Imperial Valley farm workers have tilled the soil, sowed the scene, and harvested the crops of this rich agriculture area, and...
Whereas these workers and the agriculture industry have provided food in abundance for the people in cities, the nation, and world, have this contributed greatly to the economy of Callexico and the Imperial Valley, and...
Whereas the Callexico City Council recognizes the contribution which these migratory workers and the agriculture industry have made to our community, and...
Whereas the Callexico City Council believes in the dignity of tilling the soil and tending the crops, and whereas the Callexico City Council recognizes agriculture will continue to play a strong role in our community and economy.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Callexico does not hereby, does but hereby proclaim the week of November 30th, 2025 through December 6th, 2025, Farm Workers Appreciation Week.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have anybody here to accept this proclamation? Would you like to say something first?
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mr. Protemp, Mayor Protemp. Thank you so much for allowing me to say a few words on behalf of the Farm Worker Services Coalition. My name is Elvira Naya, and I'm the chair, proud chair of the Farm Worker Services Coalition, and I'm here to invite you all to the 46th, 46th Annual Farm Worker Appreciation Breakfast, of which the city of Callexico is a sponsor. So, I wanna thank you for the proclamation in honoring our farmworkers of Imperial County and invite you all to attend the breakfast this Friday, December 5th, at 1:00 in the morning. I know it's early, but that's what time the farmworkers are there, that's what time we're gonna give them breakfast. So, it's from 1:00 AM to 5:00 PM, uh, 5:00 AM, sorry, not all day, from 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM at the, at the AJCC office at 301 Heber Avenue. So, you are all welcome to attend, and also here to request a waiver on the temporary use permit and services provided by the city employees for the setting up, because you guys are sponsors, so we'd really like to request that as well, any fees that you could so deem yourself to sponsor the event with. So, that is my announcement, so welcome. Thank you so much, and I'll accept the proclamation.
Yes, please step up. Thank you. Whereas National Night Out is a nationwide annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhood safer, more caring places to live, and whereas National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Callexico to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts, and...
Whereas the city of Callexico and the community plays a vital role in assisting the Callexico Police Department through cooperative crime, drugs, and violence prevention's efforts in Callexico and Imperial County, California, and...
Whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Callexico be aware of the importance of police-community partnerships and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime and violence in the gateway to Mexico. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, community awareness, and cooperation and partnerships are important themes of the National Night Out program, and...
Whereas the Callexico Police Depart, Police Advisory Commission has partnered with a diverse group of community residents, crime-prevention activists, local nonprofits, and public agencies to assist the Callexico Police Department in organizing public safety events, and...
Therefore, the City Council of the city of Callexico proclaims November 13th, 2025 as National Night Out in Callexico, California, and do hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Callexico, local businesses, public agencies, and community groups to join the Callexico Police Department, the Callexico Police Advisory Commission, and a group of dedicated community members in responding to the first Callexico National Night Out 2025.
Okay, thank you. Who's gonna come up to receive the award? Is there anything you'd like to say before?
Actually, it's a good effort, but I was voted to accept the award.
Good evening.
Can you bring up the mic, please?
Hi, good eve, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, city manager, and everyone here present. My name's Angela Moreno, I'm retired from probation and corrections, and I was asked to participate in, as a police commissioner, and it's been my pleasure to do this for the community. I think having the National Night Out for Callexico is a big step in the right movement for our Callexico Police Department and in the community as well. It's, it's very important that we teach and educate our community, our residents, our seniors, what is accessible and available to them, what resources is available to them, and I think having the National Night Out and on Thursday, the 13th, is one big accomplishment for our town, and I'm very proud to be part of it, not only myself, but also Chief Orozco and the rest of the Police Commissioner Committee, Ad Hoc Committee. If, I would like for all of them to stand up, because we all participated together in organizing this event, and, and that's all I got to say for today. But thank you for this proclamation.
Well, if you can all come up, that, all of you that participated can come up and receive the proclamation.
And I'd like to present a little gift in honor of our first National Night Out. I would like to present you, I don't have one in the picture, I can't open it.
Okay, so we're moving on to announcements. I'd like to start with an announcement. I'd like to announce our grand marshal for our Callexico Christmas Parade that's gonna be held on Saturday, December the 13th of this year, and our grand marshal for this year is Callexico Unified School District Superintendent, Mr. Arturo Jimenez, who's sitting here with us present. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, staff, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I feel like I got a promotion from superintendent to grand marshal. It is my, my privilege, my honor to represent the city of Callexico in this wonderful event. I want to congratulate the city, the city, for your leadership in bringing back the parade after taking last year off. We know, we heard from our community, we heard from our parents and our students how excited and how much fun they had when we had the parade a couple years ago, and then we also heard how some people were sad that the parade didn't happen last year. So, there's lots of good reason to feel really good about this, to feel really proud about the work that you are all doing to bring this event to the community. It is a community event, it is a connectedness event, something that connects the community and brings the community together. When I walked the parade a couple years ago, you see the generations from the wellitas, abuelitos, to the parents and the children, and the tias and tios. My own family came in from out of town to, to be part of the, and see the Callexico event, and they loved it. So, thank you for your leadership, thank you for vision, for your vision, thank you for making this happen for our community. I think it's gonna, it's gonna be another great event. Our schools are ready, they're getting ready, we're gonna have our school floats, our district float, our marching band, our shields, we're gonna have our cadets, our drum line, so we're, we're really excited to participate in, in this great event. Again, congratulations to you, thank you for your vision, thank you for your leadership, and looking forward to Saturday, December 13th, 2025, at 10:00 AM in the historic Callexico downtown. See you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would any councilmember like to add to it? No? Any councilmember have a comment about it?
Si se puede.
Okay, any other announcements from council?
Yeah, I have an announcement. The Police Department is having, through the Callexico Rotary Club, an event for kids and badges at Chuck E. Cheese tomorrow, from what time to what time?
Friday.
Friday.
It's gonna be Friday, from 3:00 to closing.
3:00 to closing, a percentage of that will go to kids and badges, so you're all invited to come in at 10:00, and when you go to Chuck E. Cheese, just inform them, you're here for the kids and badges program. So, all benefits, all, all, all the funds goes to kids and needs, so, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. City Attorney.
I don't have no comments.
If you can read the disclosure.
Sorry, I forgot that. This is the time for the public to address the City Council on any item not appearing on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. The city clerk will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Group commentators may be requested to limit their group comments to 15 minutes. The City Council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. If the item you wish to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comment when we get to the item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the City Council. The mayor and City Council reserve the right to adjust its time limit based on the number of speakers who wish to address the mayor and City Council.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to remind that public comment is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. If additional time is required for public comments, it will be heard towards the end of the meeting after discussion of potential action items. It is now 6:56 PM, and we will close public comment at 7:26 PM. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Brian Clapper.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Madam Mayor, council, staff. My name is Brian Clapper, I'm, I'm out of National City, California, in San Diego area, South Bay, and I'm here tonight to, to ask you, please, for your support. We are with the Lions International, and we have District 406, and for many, many years, the Callexico, city of Callexico had a wonderful Lions Club, and we don't wanna get into why, what happened, or how it happened, but I know Rotary is real successful down here. And we're down here today, we came all the way from the South Bay, and we have a couple of local people, but we'd really like to encourage you to help us in any way that you can with people that are interested in becoming a service organization. We are the largest service organization in the world, and we want to, we really wanna help the children, help them get glasses, and Mr. Martinez knows, coming from National City, what we do as Lions in National City, and we wanna make that happen here. So, what I'm here tonight to ask is that if any of you, anybody, anybody watching on TV, anything can help us, we wanna get names and, and people that are interested in becoming a member of this Lions Club, so that we can go into the schools and screen all their children for eyeglasses, help them in every way that we can. We do lots of things, like the Rotary. We're here to, to ask, please, for your support, and we, we left some information for every one of you with the city clerk, please look that over, my number's on that, and a couple other people's number. We would love to have your support, and we'd love to come down here and make sure that your city, like any, every other city that has a Lions Club in it, or Rotary Club, work together and make it happen. So, please support us, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Could you, before you leave, could you let us know how you can get contacted?
Yes, we gave you some information through the city clerk and...
Okay, you don't have a phone number that you wanna state out?
It's on, it's on there.
It's on the, okay.
It's all on there, but I can give you a card if you'd like.
If you wanna say it over, we're being YouTube.
Yeah, it's recorded, so if you can read it out, so those that are, or if you wanna read it out, do you have it? Just to confirm you, it's the right one, a phone number or an email, so the public...
Sure, it should be all on that brochure, the small one.
Is it the 630? No.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next comment? Next comment, Norm McKenzie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's sure a great pleasure to be here at City Calexico. My name is Norm McKenzie. I live in 1578 Palomar Drive in San Marcos, that's in the North County of San Diego. I've been a member of Lions for over 40 years, and I'm kind of a recruiter and trainer for new members in how to serve your community. And we want to try to get that done here in Calexico again. There's a lot of need here. We know what the need is. We've done a lot of homework. And we're really looking forward to getting another group together that can take and join hands with other organizations in the city to make things happen for our, for all of our young people and anybody else in need. We're the largest organization, service organization in the world with 1.4 million people, with 49,000 clubs in 210 countries and geographical areas, and we do a lot. And we do team up with Rotary, we team up with Corvus, and if we have a nice and unified operation amongst all of us, because we're definitely not in competition. We're in here to help and make things happen in a positive manner. And I really appreciate the time to come and address you. We're looking forward to doing more for the city of Calexico. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Enrique Alvarado?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. My name is Enrique Alvarado. I live at 2201 Sandero Street. I'm here on behalf of the Calexico Baja Runners to cordially invite you guys to our annual event that goes on for Veterans Day. It's held here at Mountain View Cemetery in Calexico on the Saturday before, it's Tuesday. We get together with volunteers, and we go ahead and clean all the tombstones of the veterans. We went ahead and handed out, well, back in October, they handed some letters out on behalf of the Baja Runners for you guys to see if you guys could help us offset the cost of the breakfast that's provided on the 11th of November. At 7:00 o'clock in the morning, we go ahead and meet up there, and we place flags on the tombstones of all those fallen veterans that paid the ultimate sacrifice for us to have our freedoms that we have here now in this country, this beautiful and free as country in the world. With that said, I, once again, cordially invite you guys to show up and help us out on that day on Tuesday to place flags at each tombstone, and looking for you guys' help in helping sponsoring, just like I stated before, to offset the cost. I know in years past, city managers, they've also showed up to help out also as well. We want to go ahead and open it up to everybody that could possibly help us to offset the cost. With that said, you guys have the letter. If there's any questions or anything at all, information's on there also as well. The reason why I'm here is because our president couldn't make it, Arnold couldn't make it, and Mr. Mandela couldn't make it also as well, so they had me come in and speak with you guys and, you know, invite you guys on that day. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Alvarado. What time does your event start?
The event starts on Tuesday at 7:00 in the morning. Usually people show up before 7:00 in the morning to start placing flags at the tombstones. On Saturday, on the 8th, I believe, there's gonna be volunteers from the high school showing up also as well, and from Aurora, to go ahead and place or clean up the tombstones also as well for the day before. Starts at 7:00. Breakfast is gonna be, usually, what is it, Dad?
I'm sorry?
Breakfast at 7:00, at what time?
Foods and beverages will be available after 7:00 in the morning. It all starts at 6:00, and then the ceremony will be at 10:30 a little bit.
11:00, correct. Any other questions?
I would like to, City Manager, I'd like to pledge $100 from my funds to this good cause.
I won't pledge from my funds because I already pledged it to someone else, but I'll pledge another 100 from my personal.
Likewise, I was gonna say, if you want us to cook, we can cook too. We've done it before, no, really, if you want us to cook, I was gonna ask you behind the scenes.
That's all, that's all provided, that's all done. We have volunteers for that also as well, so it's just to offset the cost. But thank you so much.
I would like to pledge $100 as well.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, so it's taken care of. Okay, any more public comment?
No more comments.
Okay, moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for those donations. Well, there's a policy we need to follow, so we'll bring those back on the next agenda, if possible, while you should be able to do that, and then they'll know that those funds are committed. Okay, but there's a process we need to follow.
Mine's gonna be personal, so I'll send it to a man.
Oh, yours is personal, so we only had Marquez and LaGaspe.
No, us three is, I believe, is personal.
Oh, yours is personal too?
And theirs will be from their fund.
I'll do it personal, because they need it right away.
Okay, so any one, all personal, okay.
We'll, we'll zell it or something, yeah.
That takes care of that, alright. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Had a couple of updates, some of which I will provide, and others I'll pass the mic to other staff members. I'm gonna talk about, just briefly, about some of the national retailers, and just in general that's happening, hopefully in our city in the near future. And then I'm gonna have Jesus talk about, briefly, about Cordova Park update. And then I'm gonna have Michael Coyne, our Planning Director, talk about ADU ordinances and the planning remodel project that's happening. And then finally, Chief Orozco, an update on the parking meters and any updates on administrative fees. I know he's been working on that. So if you need, if we, if any additional information is requested by the council, we can bring these on more formally on the agenda and discuss those in the future. But I just wanted to start out by talking about national retailers. Although I'm not gonna name any names, we, we have, definitely have some interest from national clothing retailers and restaurants coming to Calexico. So these, these projects are, are still in sort of the planning stage, but we hope to make more concrete announcements later this year, and then see some activity, construction, et cetera, in the city by the spring or the summer of next, next year. So once we get a little bit more concrete information on locations and the names and so forth, we'll, of course, make those, the council and the community, you know, make them aware of these, this new business coming to Calexico. But I just think it's a, it's just a good, it's a good signal and to, as to, you know, the progress we're already making, and, and people are watching us. Investors are watching us, stores are watching, everyone's watching us. And if they see we're on the move, they're, they're gonna join us. They're gonna wanna push the green light and know that Calexico is eager for investment and new business, and they're gonna, they're gonna make that decision, whereas maybe in the past, they passed us up or ignored us, they're gonna, they're gonna come back. So this is a good sign for us, and we'll have more information on that in the future. Next, I'm gonna have Jesus Villegas give an update. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council members. We were asked, since we are working on, we're in the process to complete the Adrian-Cordoba Memorial Park. We are working on the, as the City Council members directed us to do. But then we received a question in, for whatever reason, it's not in the agenda, but the question was made about what, how much money do we need to open one of the three fields at the Cordoba, one of the three little fields? So I, I've worked on a cost estimate, and roughly, we need about $443,000 to get the, one of the fields up and running, safe and complete. Not just a bandit, not just open the gate, but all the, all the amenities and all the things that needs to be done in order to offer the quality park that our community deserves.
Next, and again, we can, at Council Direction, we can bring back written and more detailed reports on any of these items. The next report is Michael Coyne.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Council. So recently, there's been a flurry of activity regarding ADUs, a lot of questions. So recently, we did receive a letter from HCD, which is the California Department of Housing and Community Development, informing us, something that I already knew, because we had confirmation early on during the year, that our, our local accessory dwelling unit ordinance is null and void, and that we need to apply state ADU law and SB 9 for ADU projects. And that's what we've been doing, and we've been making sure that any ADU projects do conform with state law. We have received, we have issued approximately 120 permits for ADUs this year alone. So we have been very active. That could be a combination of factors. The fact that the school district lowered their impact fees. I think that may have been a contributing factor, because it, the trajectory definitely has been up. I think last year it was 80, and the year before it was 60, and the years before were 40. So the trajectory has definitely been up, although recently, there has been a decline in new applications over the past two months, since the school district updated their impact fees to $12 a square foot. And then regarding our department transformation, we, you may see a sea container behind City Hall here that was placed here today. So we're embarking on cosmetic changes to our department. It hasn't been updated since City Hall was built, and so we're refreshing it. And we have a volunteer from Calexico Unified School District, Calexico High School, who's been helping us scan all of our documents and digitize them. So we're hoping to clean up our space and make it more inviting. We are the face, the first face of the city when we have developers come in and meet with staff to propose projects. So I think it, it behooves us to enhance the space and make the city, at least, you know, have a good front face so that we can invite investment. Thank you.
Lastly, the Chief of Police?
Madam Mayor, Mayor Portense, City Council members. I'm happy to report that the meters are in town, so we have our meters. And so what we're doing right now is we're talking with the company to schedule for them to be installed. It's not just throw them into the meter poles and start running. You have to program the meters to accept the credit cards, and how that money's gonna be routed to the city itself. So they are estimating between two, I'm trying to push it for sooner, but two to three weeks. And so, once that gets done, the plan is on a Sunday to bring in the traffic controllers to install the meters along with that company, because they have the program, and we're gonna get them all put back up.
The administrative fees?
My apologies. So administrative fees, we, we presented a report, a few City Council meetings, as to the comparisons of our administrative fees versus other cities. So we're going to present an actual proposition as to what we would recommend those administrative fees. Of course, we have to get public outreach. We're gonna have to do two workshops, and then post that, the following City Council meeting on the newspaper with enough notice for the public to show up for the first reading. Then following City Council meeting, a second reading, after which it becomes, it becomes active 45 days after the second City Council meeting, and that's our plan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. That finishes our report. If you have any direction or comments, thank you.
Question, when will the parking meters be placed?
We're estimating about the 17th of November or the week after.
Thank you.
I have a question, City Manager, in regards to, you were supposed to give us an update on the concern that the two residents from Hartstone brought to us in our last meeting regarding the Sput Moreno project?
Yes, I, I have provided several updates online, and then, but I've been directed by the City Attorney not to dive into a specific project at a council meeting. However, I can provide additional information, you know, via memo or meet individually with council members if they'd like further update. Thank you.
I have a, I have a couple. The truck routes, that's one of the things that I had sent out. And the security at our parks, follow up on that?
Truck routes, Jesus?
Yeah, that break has been moving along since we, we already secured the traffic counters, but since we are in our study, we are going to include Highway 98 simultaneously, so we, we can get a realistic comparison between the two roads, just in case the truck, or semi trucks, I mean, change roads once they notice we have traffic counters along Cold Road. We got in contact with Caltrans. We submit our request to, to give, to get the authorization to install those traffic counters. Unfortunately, we didn't receive the answer, so we have been following up with them. Last week, it was a verbal communication with Caltrans. And today, this morning, I follow up, I mean, with something in writing. So they finally replied, saying, okay, we received it, and we are going to give you an answer in the follow, next week. So we are ready, we, in the county, we are ready to go into the field. We already chose the three points per road, one along, three along Cold Road, and three along Highway 98. So basically, we're at the mercy of Caltrans. Hopefully, they are going to be, I mean, a little bit more receptive this time, after a few emails. And hopefully, I can, I can give you an update next council meeting, but we are still working on that. I mean, with the city never stop, it's just, we cannot proceed without Caltrans support.
Also, we're adding additional security for our, our parks and monuments and so forth, correct?
Yes, we've installed a live camera at the Veterans Memorial, so it's recording 24/7. We're also looking into cameras for the parks also. We're kind of piggybacking off of Public Works' project right now for Wi-Fi. So as soon as that gets done, we're gonna, that's the goal we're gonna try to do, is to put cameras on every park and also the monuments.
Also, we're posting flags out there, right, for the veterans that's coming up on the 11th?
The installation to this 11th?
Yeah, we're, we have, every year we put flags up.
Oh, flags, yes, I thought that to replace the flags.
No, 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 flags.
Little, little flags.
Flags, yeah, sorry, it's my bad.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll move on to Commissioners' reports. Do we have any Commissioner reports? Yes, we do. Javier Gonzalez?
Honorable Mayor, Honorable Council, Staff, and Public, Javier Gonzalez, Chairman of the Calexico Police Advisory Commission. I want to invite you and the public to our event this Saturday, November 8th. We're gonna have our community cleanup. We hope to clean up all the graffiti in our parks. We hope to clean a lot of graffiti in our, on our streetlights, utility boxes, and if we can, we're gonna pick up litter through Highway 98. A lot of empty lots that are full of litter. You're more than welcome to join us. We're gonna have the kids from the high school, and it's gonna be, we're gonna meet 7:30 at the Kennedy Gardens Park, corner of Rockwood and Espinosa. We'll be leaving to work at 8:30. We'll be back by 12. We're gonna have hot dogs. Our next event will be on Thursday, November the 13th. You just heard the National Night Out. We're very glad, we're very happy for the support of the community, the support of the council, the support of the commission, and all the members that have joined us. We've met for the last two me, two months. Every Tuesday, we want to thank the library for allowing us to be there every, every week, and helping us with making copies of our agendas. The Police Commission has been very, very hard at work with our chief and our lieutenant. Thanks for the help on traffic. We're looking into traffic, we're talking about traffic in schools. Also, we've discussed the security at the monument. Last, last meeting, Chair, Chairperson, Commissioner Alvarado was presented with a check to start, you know, replacing the missing, the missing, missing the name tags. We've also, we've also, one of the concerns of the commission is code enforcement. As you know, code enforcement has moved from the Building Department to the Police Department, and we're having, we're having our chief and our lieutenant give us updates on what is it that, that they're doing. We wanna hit the empty lots. It's been more... It's, it's been more, more than due that we have a lot of empty lots, whether they're businesses, they're homes, they're empty, they're dirty, nothing has been done. I, I, I know that our chief was telling us that they're, they're starting to work on that graffiti. One of the things that I want to bring up is design ordinance, especially when politics are here, everybody's starting to place our, their signs in, uh, public areas, right aways, and the more we allow them, the more they're doing it. In, uh, Central, if you, they allow you a certain amount of, of signs, if you go over the side you, if you put them in a public area, they cite you. We should start doing the same, because if you see right now in some of the parks, some of the, some of the fences, now you have pu, like, signs from, uh, from daycares and everything. And, uh, we, we need to, we need to start getting tough if we want to clean up our business. And I think that with the code enforcement under the police department, we will be able to start seeing a change. Uh, the other thing that we want to see, there's a lot of, uh, broken, uh, broken streetlights. It's not fair that IID replaced all our lights and some of our, our streetlights, which is wiring, and IID doesn't do that. Uh, there's like 30 of them, we need to start fixing them up. I mean, at least once a month, one a month, because, uh, security is one of our main concerns, so some of the things that, uh, we'll be bringing up after we have these events. So again, this Saturday, you're more than welcome to join us. It'll be fun. We hope we, we accomplish at least, uh, most of what we have accomplished with that. We have seven different projects, seven different projects that are going to go out, and, uh, individual people going to clean out graffiti, so we hope to see you there. If, if not, then we'll see you at the, uh, National Night Out. I, I know that we have like 20 something participants. Mexican police and their chief will be here, so we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any more? All right. We'll move on over to city council comments and reports of meetings attended. Mayor Portem Legaspi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to all of you. Uh, the city manager, Ben Martinez, uh, and I, along with some stakeholders, met regarding to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, on, on what's going to happen in the near future. Uh, we haven't given up on the Chamber of Commerce, so we're still working on that building. Uh, the city manager, uh, council member Calderon and I met at, with, uh, administrators from the Catholic Church to discuss their alleyways and necessary repairs of the surrounding streets. Obviously, there's a lot of streets out there, uh, that need some fixing, and I know that, uh, our Public Works Director Jesus is going to be working on a lot of streets. So council member Marcus and I attended the library's Halloween carnival, which had about 380, uh, participants, including kids and adults and one dog. And so, uh, thank you, Lisa, for doing a, a really good job at that. Uh, the mayor, council member Thailand and I attended the Collexico Police Department Halloween event at Rockwood Plaza. Uh, thank you, Lisa, for doing a really good job and assisting to make that happen along with our cheerleaders booster club and other commissioners. I attended the library board of commission meeting. I also attended the Collexico Fire Department Explorer Recruitment Event at Station One with Chief Contreras and his crew, doing an excellent job and out there recruiting. Uh, we had two individuals from the city of Imperial that came and signed up, and I learned from Chief Contreras that the city of Collexico is the only, uh, city that has a fire explorer program. Wow, that's pretty cool. And, uh, I attended the ad hoc committee, uh, being a part of it, and, uh, thank you, Javier, for, for doing a really good job, and the rest of the staff. A lot of work that he's been putting in, um, so it's going to be, I think it's going to be a really success this coming Saturday and for the National Night Out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thailand.
Um, I'll, I'll keep my mind brief. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm going to start with Chief Contreras. That's awesome that you're doing the explorers program. That's amazing. Um, that's awesome. So congratulations on revamping that and starting it up again. Um, I want to say, uh, kudos and great job to the Collexico Police Officer Association and to, um, the Collexico Cheerleaders Booster Club for organizing their Nightmare on Fifth Street. It was a lot of fun and something really nice for the community. I'll keep it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marcus.
So since our last meeting, um, I was able to attend a meeting with the city clerk and city manager in regards to renovations and updates to the, um, council chambers. I also had a meeting with council member Calderon and the city manager in regards to community member concerns and follow-ups on those. Uh, I was able to attend the, uh, the Collexico Library Halloween Family Night. Um, I was very pleased to be able to read to the children. It was a great experience, and it was a great attendance, a great turnout. And during that same time, we had the Collexico Recreation Department also had the Halloween carnival. They had games and goodies for the community, and this is why I am very focused that we are maintaining services for, um, our community members. They're really gathering, come around whenever we have these, um, opportunities for our youth and for families to go out and have these opportunities to, um, explore and play and enjoy themselves. So this is something that we wanted to continue, and we wanted to, I think all of us wanted that for Collexico, and we wanted to make sure that we're continuing to provide these services for them. Um, I also was able to, uh, come and join during the library commission meeting, and I had some questions and, and thank you, uh, I want to thank them for, you know, their service and their input during that, um, question and answer that we had going on. Uh, I also went to Fire Station One where there was a presentation for the explorer program. Um, I really appreciate that because it gives our youth a great opportunity to develop skills, hands-on experience, and, and it's something that we really need to provide for our youth, um, especially right now where our kids don't have outlets. This is a great program, and thank you so much, Chief, for bringing that up. Also, I was able to, um, it, go and, and listen to beautiful, uh, music, chamber music. Uh, it was in the Cultural Arts Center, so thank you, Norma, for that. It was wonderful. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Calderon.
Yeah, good evening, uh, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. Um, I had the pleasure to, uh, attend the ICTC, uh, meeting last, actually, it was October 22nd for Ms. Thailand. Um, just a few things that happened in that meeting. Um, the construction that's taking place in our downtown, uh, the construction is on schedule, and the project is, um, will be completed by March 2026. And that was good news, so hopefully we, we can open up soon and, and start getting people into the city of Collexico. Also, um, they mentioned that, um, the Second Street ends a road bridge rehabilitation project. We have ICTC that is working with Caltrans to develop an approach, uh, towards proceeding with the development of required environmental and engineering phases for the rehab. So they're trying to get us money for that, uh, West Side Bridge, and hopefully, uh, we can get it back on, on track, so get so, some of the traffic to be able to go through there. Another, um, news that was, uh, brought up, um, ICTC is also, um, constructing a similar but a smaller, um, transportation center in our east port. And normally, uh, if you all know, when you come across, you see a land of, a piece of land there where everybody gets, actually walks up to that land and they get picked up. Well, that's the area. They already secured the property from the owner, and this project, uh, it will start, um, at the end of this year. So we're going to have restrooms, um, also, um, base, so, uh, we have, uh, buses come in and so forth. And these buses will be coming down to the, uh, transportation center in downtown. Um, another thing that I was, uh, called by, by a sergeant at Sette Nella State Prison, uh, the prisoners, uh, became aware of what they did to our Veterans Memorial, and there is in the process, they're going to have a fundraiser, and whatever funding, uh, they're able to, uh, generate, they're going to donate it to the, uh, memorial, uh, service wall and so forth, that, and that's in the works right now. Uh, like some other, my peers said, um, on Monday, uh, Mr. Contreras had his parent night, uh, explorer night, or, um, there was approximately about nine, nine kids, and, um, and some of them were even from Imperial. Again, um, I just have to give you kudos, uh, Chief Contreras. Uh, we talked about this when we first, I came on board, and you were able to, um, contact the Boy Scout, no, it's, what is it? Scouts? Yeah, Scouts of America. And, um, you made it happen. And again, thank you for all the hard work and dedication, and also thank your staff, because they're the ones that are going to be training our, our kids, and hopefully, uh, we can have kids that'll be able to, uh, become firefighters in the future. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I just say something real quick? So during the, um, time that we were able to come in into the library commissions meeting, um, I know that we pledged to, uh, purchase some bicycles, because we want to promote literacy within our youth, especially the older youth, because I know that, um, in the school district, we don't have the AR program anymore, so we want to make sure that we're encouraging that, and I know, uh, that Mr., uh, council member Calderon pledged to buy one bicycle for one of the months, and I did the second one. So I invite, uh, my fellow council members, if you want to participate in order to promote literacy for the older kids. I think it's a, a, a great, um, cause, and I invite everybody to participate. Thank you.
Also, a couple of things. Uh, I forgot, Norma, to, uh, give you kudos on that performance, and I want to thank, uh, council member Adiana Marcus for bringing in the talent. Uh, it was an extraordinary trio, uh, and you had the Halloween theme behind, and the, I've never seen, uh, clips of horror movies while they're performing, so you guys did such an excellent job. Also, uh, I know that council member, uh, Adiana Marcus, Lencho, my, uh, Lencho? And myself, just used to call him Lencho. Uh, we're also going to assist with the, uh, the fire ex, uh, explorers that are coming in that can't afford their, um, their entry fee, so we had pledged some money for that too, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to keep it short. I'm, I'm going to, uh, talk about, uh, a great event that I attended on Saturday, November the 1st. It was the Imperial County New River Community Action Day. Um, we had volunteers, um, through, from, from outside our city who helped us, uh, plant 1,000 iodine bushes and 600 mesquite trees. Um, it was a beautiful day, it was a beautiful event. I have to say, it must be the most fulfilling event that I've attended to since I've been here, but, um, it couldn't have happened, and I want to express my infinite gratitude to the following agencies. Keep America Beautiful, Keep California Beautiful, California Climate Action Corps, the Imperial Irrigation District, the city of Imperial, Barrett Biological Enterprise, Jose Angel Environment, and our wonderful staff from our Public Works Department. So I want to thank them, and, um, we did speak about maybe bringing another event for a cleanup, but, um, that would be held, I think it was, um, from, uh, Keep, Keep California Beautiful, so, so hopefully, um, we'll continue with those communications, but I applaud the work of, uh, the public work staff. It was a great morning, and, um, we need to have more events like those because it was such a great feeling to be out there. Um, and also, um, Director Michael Coyne was out there planning with a, with a lot of sunscreen lotion, but, so, thank you, everyone, and that's it, so. Oh, yeah, we, oh, yeah, um, uh, Mayor Portem Legaspi is, uh, reminding me that, um, now that we are talking about the, the Veterans Memorial plaques that were stolen, um, Jeff, uh, Assembly Member Jeff Gonzalez also pledged to replace, um, all those plaques. So, um, I want to thank him and everybody else who has come forward to help us do that. We really appreciate it. So, um, that's all I have. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to add to that, Mayor, that we have found, um, some of the names from previous applications in the past of the veterans. I don't think it's the entire list, but we have found some, so I would encourage anyone, uh, you know, knowledgeable about the veterans that were, uh, previously on the wall, on the plaques, to please contact the city and so we can get that information. Thank you.
Maybe if we can post something on the website and on social media, and we could all share as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with nothing else, we'll move on, on over to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailand.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to discussion and potential action items. Item number 13, authorize the city manager or his representative to surplus declaration of surplus property, Collexico Fire Department, ambulance unit 2675.
Yes, Chief, can you handle that up?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We're bringing before you an approval of the declaration of the Collexico Fire Department, unit 2675, that was involved in a vehicle accident back in 2022. Uh, the unit was declared a total loss due to some frame damage and, um, uh, box damage, so it's been sitting, uh, at the Public City Shop for the past three years. Um, as you know, um, we've been heavily involved with Imperial Valley College Fire Science Program, um, and they mentioned if, uh, the possibility to have that unit donated to their program because they're willing to use their welding, uh, shop and their new facilities there at IVC to make it into a fire simulator for the fire science program.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Any questions or comments from the council? Do you have a motion?
Uh, I have a, a motion to approve. Uh, thank you for making it use, maybe, um, I'm sure that IVC will restore it and put it to use, uh, with the firefighters, or future firefighters. That's all I have.
Okay, we have motion to approve by Councilmember Calderon. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailand.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number 14, appointment of two residential commissioners to the Collexico Housing Authority Board. Does anybody have an, um, an appointment or a nomination?
I believe they're the same appointees, so all we're doing is kind of reaffirming their nomination, unless some, some of the councils have different.
So your motion is to approve Ms. Gloria Tovar and Fernando Garcia?
Yeah.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailand.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number 15, adopt resolution number 2025 requesting equitable allocation of proposition for funding for New River Environmental and Public Health Projects. Do you want me to speak, or, or you want to speak?
Whatever you'd like, Madam.
Whatever you'd like. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Proposition four, uh, offers a wide range of, of projects up to $10 billion, uh, to commit, for committed, commitment, commitment to addressing climate change and, uh, throughout, throughout California. Um, there are, uh, funds in key areas such as water security, wildlife prevention, pollution control, et cetera. Um, there is a pot of funds that Collexico is, uh, sort of specifically qualifies for. Uh, the amount of this funding is approximately $46 million. Uh, this prod, this funds could be addressed, um, to the, uh, further cleaning and restoration of the New, New River. Um, uh, a situation that has plagued, uh, and caused environmental degradation not only to Collexico, but the entire, uh, Imperial Valley as, as the river, uh, connects to the Saltman Sea. Um, the purpose of this item, this resolution, is that, um, uh, ci, city of Collexico pursues a, a fair share of the, the money. Uh, other community, another community, essentially, San Diego County is also interested in, in this funding. They, they have a similar situation, uh, with cross-border pollution, water pollution, et cetera, that, that causes them, um, environmental degradation and problems as well, including closure of beaches, et cetera. et cetera. But we are very concerned about our issue, and we're very poised with shovel-ready projects to be able to install and do wastewater improvements to our plant that would address this problem quickly and effectively. So we just feel we're in a perfect position for this funding. Again, the $46 million. Again, I don't think we're looking for all of it. We know there are other issues, other counties with similar types of issues. But we are looking for our fair share. So I would ask for the council to support the Proposition 4 resolution that we have on the agenda tonight. And the IV county cities and county itself have also, are being asked, we're in the process of getting support, because this really isn't just a Collexico issue, it's a county, it's an IV county, Imperial Valley county issue. So hopefully, we could be successful in the coming months on this initiative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to add a little bit to that. The Prop 4 funding, which was a $10 billion bond, out of that, like you mentioned, $46 million is allocated only to cross-border rivers. And there's only two of them in the state of California, which is the Tijuana River and the New River. So the reason why we have this here tonight is because the County of San Diego, in their efforts to address the Tijuana River, has requested that they receive the full $46 million. And the City of Collexico, along with the County of Imperial, we are requesting our fair share. Because these funds are to address the rivers. And we're not asking for all of it, we're asking for half of it. And so that our citizens know, we intend on using this as a match to what we already have saved to upgrade our water treatment facility. Because the way that, how that works with the New River is because the current project that we have is that we treat our wastewater, we clean it up, and then we pour it back up into the New River, so it dilutes the water. So as it travels up north into the Salt and Sea and through the wetlands, you get less polluted water that reaches that area. So by upgrading our wastewater treatment plant, we will be able to pour more water into it, and we will be able to secure a good operation for a good few years for that project. So just to give you some information on that, we have been working in collaboration with County Supervisor Martha Singh, IID Director Karin Elgenio, Councilmember Thailanda, City Manager, Public Works Director, myself. And we will be meeting with the State Water Chairman on Friday, who, the State Water Board is the one that's going to make the determination on who's going to get the $46 million or how it's going to be split. So we're going to meet with him. He was very gracious, and he's going to come down to our city, and we'll show him around. But yes, we are fighting for our city, for our people, for our valley. And it's hard, because you know, it's San Diego, and it's the valley. So, but, but we're going to keep at it. So this resolution, that's what it's saying. It's saying that we are going after this funding, just half of it. Yesterday, the Imperial County Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution in support of this at the regular meeting. Last night, the Brawley City Council also passed a letter of support for this. And every city in the valley will receive the request for a letter of support, including some organizations and agencies on the North End. So do we have any public comment? Do we have any comment from the council? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protemla Gaspie.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes, and I have a further comment, Mr. Martinez. A lot of the people in the valley aren't aware of the damage that Tropical Storm Mario had on our new construction. So I know you're bringing them around, but if you can take pictures of the damage that was caused by Tropical Storm Mario, it would help. And that also came out in the ICTC meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our public hearing. Item number 16 is a public hearing on the Proposed Emergency Medical Services User Fee Schedule per the EMS Rate Study dated April 2018 and Adoption of Updated EMS User Fee Schedule with CPI slash ECI Adjustments through 2025 and Approval of a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Collexico, California, Adopting Fees and Charges for Emergency Medical Services and Making Certain Findings and Taking Certain Actions Relating Therto. I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:46 PM. Is there a presentation from staff?
Good evening, Mayor, honorable members of the council and the community. Tonight's item is a request for a already preapproval of the Emergency Medical Service Fees that were approved back in 2018, that included a five-year CPI from 2018 to 2023. Unfortunately, those were not implemented, and we are bringing to council the proposal resolution before you to include those five years as well as '24 and '25, bringing us, aligning our fees with the current economic and labor cost trends that are currently going across the nation. So staff respectfully recommend that the council adopt the resolution approving the updated EMS user fees, including the Consumer Price Index CPI, annual adjustments, and authorize an additional five years of continuing CPI adjustments consistent with the city's adopted budget and official inflation indices. These proposed fees would be brought to council before, City Council, for prior implementation. I believe this action will ensure a transparent, predictable, and financially responsible framework for maintaining our EMS operations and our ambulance and service.
Okay, are there any questions from the council?
No, just thank you, Chief Contreras, for the work that you put on this and trying to bring in assistance financially to the Fire Department and the city. So thank you for, I know this job took a lot of work, so good job on that, Chief.
This is a long time coming, so thank you. Yeah. That's awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Marquez? Okay, I just want to thank you for bringing this up. It was long overdue. We should have done it, we should have done it before. So I'm glad that you caught it and you're bringing this forward. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we don't.
Okay, being as there are no other speakers.
I do have one question for you, and I know you did it, but I want for the public, you know. I mean, you went to the IVHD.
We, I did present to the IVHD October 9 regarding my findings on AB 918. There is some wording in the actual bill that there is some funding available for entities that own and operate ambulance services. So I did present to them, to the board, and showed them my findings and let them know that we are working on our end, the city end, to, you know, provide a more improved service. And we are seeking additional help and assistance from the board, because it is in their actual bill that they should be providing some funding sources for our ambulance service, because we are the only public agency in the county that owns and operates its own public ambulance. So I think we're well overdue on some funding from the board, from IVHD.
And thank you. This is the Heffernan Property Tax that was removed when Heffernan was dissolved, and he went ahead and had a meeting and actually gave him the presentation, and you made a good contact, correct?
That's right.
All right. All right, that's all I wanted to public enough.
Thank you, and that's an effort that we've been working on for a few months now with the chief to provide better services to our community as far as ambulances go. So being that there are no other speakers, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing at 7:50 PM. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protemla Gaspie.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, for informational items, item number 17, receive and file Library Board of Trustees Minutes for Meeting on September 2, 2025. Item number 18, receive and file Community Services Commission Minutes for Regular Meeting of September 10, 2025. Item number 19, status update on parks funding allocated in the fiscal year 2025 budget and remaining unspent balances. So we're getting an update on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, we also have a speak, public comment.
On the filing of them? Oh, but let's do public comment after her presentation? Or I mean, just the, so.
Brief overview.
If you can just give us a brief summary on what the update is?
Okay, good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers, and members of the public. So what I did, the request was to go through the fiscal year 2026 budget and see what funding had been allocated for parks throughout the different funds. And so as I did that, you know, there is a combination of funding. There's some in art and public places, FEMA, ARPA, actually, it's ARPA, the Bravo-Rodiles CFT, local capital projects, state local capital grants, and impact fees. So I did include, and the total funding that was allocated for parks in the fiscal year 2026 budget was 10.6 million. We have spent $33,000 so far, and we have a remaining unspent balance of 10.5 million. So we haven't spent, I think, a percentage, we still have 99% left to spend. And I provided a chart that shows you the projects, where the funding source is for that project, the amount allocated, how much has been spent, and the unspent, remaining spent funds. And then I also provided a graph that shows you the allocation by fund, and a graph that shows allocation by project. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll take public comment.
Yolanda Cunningham.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham. Vivo en el 19-01 firmo. Que quería recordar hace, no sé más de seis meses, no sé si se recuerda señor Legaspi, que habíamos hablado en aquel tiempo de los topes, que la gente se levantaron firmas y que la gente estuvo pidiendo para seguridad. Y se acuerda que le pedimos de una manera muy atenta, verdad, que queríamos posponer por la cuestión del dinero del CFT. Es una situación muy importante de suma importancia para los niños, la seguridad. Pero en base del dinero que hay en el CFT, que no es mucho dinero alocado, o sea, dinero que se ha generado, porque pues no sabemos, no nos han dicho muy bien de las cuentas de lo que, de todos estos años, el dinero que se ha generado. Pues queremos, la prioridad de nosotros es que se cuide el dinero, verdad, que la primera prioridad es que se aplique para el rediseño del parque. Y ahorita, hablando, perdón, de la cancha, lo que acaba de decir el señor Villegas de 433 mil dólares para abrir una sola cancha de béisbol, pues yo creo que nosotros, los residentes, pues no es conveniente en este momento, porque para empezar, pues estamos esperando que se haga un rediseño del parque. Y eso se va a gastar, y no sabemos qué cancha se va a definir, qué se va a quedar, cómo vamos a invertir dinero que no tenemos. Hay que cuidar el dinero. En ese parque se ha tirado muchísimo dinero por mucho tiempo, entonces pues ya no queremos que esto esté pasando. Por favor, les pedimos que, si, les pedimos que por favor entiendan cuáles son las prioridades para nosotros. Ese parque ya se hubiera terminado desde hace mucho tiempo. Y también quisiera aprovechar que, queremos que se nos dé un reporte, así como se llegan los reportes del agua, así también queremos que se nos dé un reporte a los residentes mientras estemos pagando el dinero. Queremos saber bien en qué se está gastando el dinero. Porque les decimos durante tanto, tanto tiempo, no sabemos, no sabemos, está muy genérico eso, de verdad, entonces queremos así desglosado cómo se va el dinero. Básicamente es eso. No, sugerimos que no se abra esa cancha hasta que se haga el dinero que se va a pagar para el reporte ese que viene de la compañía, el RFP. Queremos que se pague eso, que es la prioridad de los residentes, y después de eso pues ya, ya se dirá, porque pues no es suficiente el dinero que hay. Gracias.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Okay, so that was for informational items. No, councilmembers have any comment, question? Okay, moving on to item number 20, informational item, mosquito abatement update.
Yeah, good evening again, your mayor and councilmembers. This is regarding the mosquito abatement update. Basically, Poligo Department has been working on this issue since I've been here, which is about three months. Really, really good with Imperial County Vector Program, because we were approached from them regarding what they need in order to make happen their, to be successful with their program. So basically, we have met twice with them. First in September 26, we outlined the strategy. Then we met again November 4, I mean, just a day ago, to go over what has been done. Also, in order to make this mosquito abatement successful, we met with Imperial Irrigation District. Basically, we, this is in October 22, we met with May Pacheco Water Department Manager, Ismail Gomez, Water Department Principal Engineer, and Louie Pacheco, Director of Division 4. Because basically, one of the problems that create this mosquito infestation is that our retention basins are not able to actually get rid of the water coming from the storms, the two storms that we have had. So IID committed to help us cleaning the drainage line that goes along the All-American Canal at the north side and the south side. They started working last month. They have been working all day for three days. They're not done yet, but basically, there is a hope now that the line is going to be cleaned, so the water can flow freely. Meanwhile, we as a city, or we at the Poligo Department, having worked, working really match the watering, those retention basins. And also, we just began removing the excessive vegetation that shouldn't be there, I mean, to start with. So anyways, in our last meeting with the Imperial County Vector Control Program Specialist on November 4, he actually recognized before that the city had been done. He said that the progress has been tremendous. He'd never seen that before, and that's good for the city. It's a new approach that the city's doing in order to communicate with the city, since that that shouldn't happen again. In my report, which you should have a copy, we, what we did is actually make an Exhibit A showing the retention basin location. A showing the retention basin location. We have 12 of them, and then the following 15 pages are pictures taken today of the numerous retention basins. So now, if you go through the page, you see most of our retention basin are completely empty of the stormwater, so the mosquitoes shouldn't be a problem anymore. We have specifically two places that we are still working on. These two retention basins are near the Rancho Frontera, and then another one is called Margaritas. So basically, out of these two, the rest are already done. We, and we can feel we are improving because we are not receiving any phone call complaining about the mosquitoes. That's a good sign. The U.R. Racing Park, which was a big concern from our residents, is already done. I mean, it's muddy, definitely, but most of the water is already out of the retention basins. I'm really positive about the possibility to have the drainage pipe, IAD's drainage pipe cleaned by the end of this week. That's what the commitment, and we have a scheduled meeting on November 15, 14, I'm sorry, Friday, November 14, with the IAD officials, just to go over the work done over these weeks, these two weeks. And if it's not done, I'm sure the collaboration is going to continue until the problem is solved. If you have any question or concern, please let me know.
So how long has this maintenance not been done?
The maintenance of the pipeline?
Yes.
Well, they began Monday, but based on the records, I couldn't identify when it was done before, so basically, three days now.
No, but like, how long ago was the last time it was done?
Before?
Yes.
I don't know right now, I mean, it's unknown to me.
So thank you for getting it done, because like, if someone's going to get it done, it's going to be you. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I know.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, and basically, I would say our department should be always really proactive in working collaboration with IAD, and because they have a really extensive area to work on. So we, as a city, should be always being accountable to them, and if we have concern, we shouldn't wait years to call it, definitely. From now on, we are going to be doing that, and we are going to be monitoring the drains nearby the city, and if we see something that is abnormal, the commitment is, this is a two-way highway. They are willing to help us as long as we are proactive to let them know what the concerns are.
Well, we really appreciate all your efforts, that's definitely showing, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Mr. Villegas, all right, moving over to future agenda items, Mayor Protem Legaspi.
I don't have none right now.
Okay, Councilmember Thailinda?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Marquez?
No, I don't have none, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Calderon?
I did have an item, but based on the attorney's advice, I was going to address the Hearthstone construction, and we'll leave it at that, and I have, well, let me thank the two residents that came up and actually informed us about it. We're following up on it, and hopefully we'll come to some resolution soon as possible, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Based on one of the public comments, I do want to bring up that, or remind the council that we did create a CFT commission, and the purpose of that commission was precisely to address the question that was just presented, so that all the homeowners from Bravo Rodriguez and Hearthstone, and also with the other CFT is Grand Plaza, so that we had a commission similar to the Measure H Commission that looks over the numbers, looks at the balances and all this stuff. So I'd like to remind the council to maybe look for someone to appoint as their commissioners so that these homeowners can have answers to their questions. With nothing else, I'd like to move to adjourn. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailinda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon. Motion passes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 8:05 PM.